Hi, I'm Susan Kennedy and welcome to this County Council Town Hall meeting. We are in Silver Spring, Maryland at the AFI Theater where residents have gathered to ask their council members questions about the things that are on their mind. But before we go to the audience for questions, I'm going to turn it over to Council President Nancy Navarro for some opening remarks.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. It is really a pleasure to be here in downtown Silver Spring, one of the most exciting places, I think, in the county, a place that we like to emulate throughout the county as well. It's been extraordinary activity and we're really excited to be here in AFI. I would like to basically say a few words with regards to where we are today, as many of you know very well. The county has gone through some extraordinarily difficult financial times in the last three years, but I can say that this council, working in collaboration with the executive, has worked really hard to implement fiscal measures that are long-term and that are structural to make decisions that were very hard for us, but really important, I think, for you, our constituents, in terms of where we have set the county forward. This Friday, we will receive the budget requests from the executive, so we're going to start our work and it's going to be imperative to hear from you in terms of where your priorities are. And we will work very hard, as we always do, on your behalf to ensure that we continue to promote our economic activity here in the county, as well as address the issues of the most vulnerable in all your priorities. So thank you again for being here this evening. And what I'll do is I'll want my colleagues to introduce themselves. Before we do that, I also want to recognize that we have Ms. Rosen from Congressman Van Hollen's office represented here this evening, so I really appreciate your being here as well. And I'll start with Council Vice President Craig Rice. We'll go to my right and then to the left.
Good evening, everyone. Craig Rice, Council Vice President, representing District 2, which is a large portion of the up county, including areas like Germantown, Montgomery Village, Clarksburg, Damascus, all the way up to the Frederick line.
Hello, I'm County Councilman George Leventhal, and I've been to the AFI so many times, but I've never actually sat up on this stage. So having seen people on this stage, including LeBron James, Clint Eastwood, I can't tell you how thrilled I am finally to have made it. I represent all of you in Montgomery County. I'm one of your at-large council members. Looking forward to your questions.
Good evening, I'm Hans Reimer, and I'm one of the four at-large council members. My colleague's reference to Clint Eastwood has me in mind to do a joke here, but I'm probably not going to do that. So I'm glad to be here. I think we're going to get some great dialogue, and thanks for coming out tonight, I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Irvin.
Good evening, my name is Valerie Irvin. This is a district that I represent. It has grown substantially in the last eight months with redistricting. Now I represent Tacoma Park, Silver Spring, and all the way to the Howard County line. And so it is a pretty large district geographically, so I'm glad to be here again tonight. I do remember being here six years ago, I think, almost going on seven years ago. It was my very first town hall meeting, and for those of you who were here then, the big issue of the evening was the Piney Branch Pool. I remember that if you were here. So it's good to be back.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Phil Andrews, and I serve the 3rd District, represent the 3rd District of the county, which is the Rockville Gaithersburg area, parts of Aspen Hill and Leisure World as well. I am in my 4th term, and I chair the council's Public Safety Committee and serve on the Education Committee.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nancy Florine. I'm one of the four at-large members of the County Council, meaning that we represent all of you in Montgomery County. It's been a real honor and a privilege to serve the community. I'm in my 3rd term, and I chair the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee and serve on the Transportation, Energy, Infrastructure and Environment Committee. So there are always issues there, and I have to say, thank you for being here, thank you for caring about your county. I look forward to your questions.
I'm Mark Elrich. I'm also one of the four at-large council members. I live in Tacoma Park. I'm on the Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee and on the Public Safety Committee. And it's always great to come to the theater. I grew up with this as being my local theater, and it's nice to have it back as a theater.
Okay. Well, now that we've met everybody, we have a group of students who are ready with a question. I have a group. I'll let them introduce themselves and tell you where they're from.
Hi, my name is Casey Minnick, and I am El Jefe of the DTSS Teen Jam Youth Board, which you see before you.
I'm Karina Duña, as part of Teen Jam.
My name is Natalie Malara, and I'm also part of Teen Jam.
My name is Cecile Kenny, I'm part of Teen Jam.
And I assume you guys are a unified front here.
That's correct. So let me just briefly explain what Teen Jam is. Teen Jam is a county-funded initiative to promote youth culture in downtown Silver Spring and to create a positive, safe atmosphere for teenagers to express themselves through their art to their peers. But we also believe that events of this nature can benefit local nonprofits and charities in Montgomery County, which help the people of our county. Our question is, we are wondering if the county is willing to support our efforts to find a consistent venue in Silver Spring. It has to be in downtown Silver Spring, hence the name, that is safe, secure, accessible to the community, be it by metro or bus, as well as able to host events which will have a full PA sound system. We can't really do what we do without that. So we're hoping that the county and the community is willing to work with us to find a venue for these events. We have the funding in place, and we'd like to be able to use it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would be, I'd like to address that first. Thank you very much. It's really exciting that you all came together as a team. There, all nine council members are very committed to finding a venue in downtown Silver Spring, and we're very fortunate now that the county government actually has buildings that will be vacated soon. So there will be a choice, I think, that the council will have to make, which is very good for you all, to try to find the proper venue that you can do all the things you just laid out. So I think the timing is right, and you mentioned funding. I hadn't heard anything about funding, so I have a smile on my face about that. So if there's a funding stream that you all know about that we don't know about, we need to talk. But I think that all of us are very, very committed to making sure we find a place for young people in downtown Silver Spring.
Councilmember Elrich?
I just, I wanted to, I guess, ask, because Valerie's right, I think we're all committed to trying to do this, is, you know, what is your sense of your space needs, number one? And number two, are you working with, you know, Roberto and with the other arts groups in Silver Spring, so we can come up with some kind of coordinated assessment of what the demand for space is, so we can identify what the appropriate amount of space is?
Right now, our partners are the Gandhi Brigade, which is a nonprofit located in City Place Mall, which is, was set up to promote social activism in the youth through media, like film and arts, like open-mic events and stuff like that. We have been working with the Civic Center. In fact, all of our events were supposed to take place at the Civic Center, however, and we had them all scheduled there. However, there was some concerns over scheduling conflicts that we were not made aware of until right as the event was on our doorstep. And that would be that we were scheduled across the hall from a religious gathering, so that sort of threw the PA out the window. And so we weren't really able to access the Civic Center because each successive scheduled date was scheduled similarly. So we have reached out to several buildings in the Silver Spring area, such as the Lee Building, the Roundhouse Theater was one, I don't think we got a reply from them, St. Michael's Church on Wayne Avenue, scheduling conflicts. So we've reached out to several people and we've found similar issues each time.
What is the size?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, our first event took place in the Spring Room at the Civic Center, which I believe the capacity is 70 people or something like that. And we had a total of nearly 200 people show up at the event, so you can see that there was a line at the door, and so we need a space that can accommodate something we feel could be as successful as that.
Councilmember Leventhal?
Well, I want to say, I've worked very closely with Councilmember Irvin and Councilmember Elrich and others. We actually had a whole session of the County Council just to discuss space issues in Silver Spring. These questions keep coming up, and we're very blessed to have this great facility, the Civic Building. We've got a new library coming online. As you mentioned, there's Roundhouse Theater, there's the Fillmore, and yet every single one of those facilities, obviously, there's a cost to operate it, and sometimes that cost becomes a hurdle that community groups can't get over. So working with Councilmember Irvin, we put substantial money in the budget. The county executive started with, I think it was $150,000, and then the council matched that with another $150,000, and that is underwriting at very low or no cost through a competitive process, community groups like yours. It may have been that that's, you know, how you got in, and Roberto Rodriguez does a terrific job, and Giru Banda had done a terrific job, and then he got promoted, so now he's running the entire east county of Montgomery County. But there's staff in council members' offices and at the Civic Building who, you know, want to work with you. We want to continue to facilitate this. And we actually enacted last year, for the first time ever, a law that says, which I sponsored with the support of my colleagues, that says that when public assets, like the old Silver Spring Library, or the Silver Spring Police Station that's about to be vacated, are disposed of, that not only is there a public process, but the County Council has to be involved in determining how those properties are dealt with. And so we're going to have a new process whereby people can engage in the use, as Councilmember Irvin mentioned, of some of these county properties that are going to change their use.
Good.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks to, actually, to Rian Roberto of the Civic Center. We spoke at the Advisory Board Meeting at the Civic Center on Monday, and Rian Roberto has reached out to us and has been very gracious with his support. So we look forward to working with him and with the council and the county.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Jefe. That was very good.
Okay, we'll have you walk. Yeah, there you go.
You're doing a great job.
Hi, my name's Ingaazi Nwadilla, and I attend Elizabeth C. in High School. And I have an assignment for the end of the year to pick an area that I want to improve. And I'm really about, like, road safety, because I see, like, nowadays, there's lots of accidents on the road. And I picked to change, install some streetlights at Sligo Creek Parkway. Yeah, like, recently, I went to, like, look around the area, and I found that, like, in Piney Branch Road and Wayne Avenue, there's, like, no, like, lighting whatsoever, and it's like a curvy path, so it's really dangerous. And also, like, it's parallel to the trail that people take bikes and walk in, and I'm like, you know, I really fear that, you know, accidents could, like, occur. And also, between First Glen Road and University Boulevard, there's, like, no lighting over there too, but except for, like, houses that are on, like, hills. But you don't really want to drive with, like, people's house lights as guides to, like, drive. That's really dangerous, I think. So I went to see if you guys are willing to, like, add maybe, like, four streetlights, like, two on the Piney Branch Road and, like, two on the, one going to University Boulevard, because I personally had, like, an experience when my dad had to go to hospital, and me and my sister over there, where is she? And we went to drive my dad, like, really late at night, and my sister was driving, and she was, like, she was really nervous, because it was really dark and she couldn't really see, but we made it, you know, safely. But I also did some research to find out, like, how much it would cost for streetlights. And I talked to Dan Sanai, and he told me that it would cost around, like, maybe, like, $100,000 for, like, three or four streetlights. And I was wondering if you guys are willing to, like, supply that money to put those streetlights up.
Councilmember Florine, want to answer that?
Thank you. Thank you for caring about this. Thank you for doing all that legwork. I hope you've written that down for us to take away with us. I wanted to say, this is how we address community problems. Typically, we hear it from constituents like yourself. What we will do is we'll ask our county staff to look into the situation, see if there are other reasons for these problems or other kinds of solutions, and this is how we really get things done. And what I wanted to emphasize to you and to everyone who's listening, this is the best way to solve local problems. Send any one of us an email. It's all councilmember dot whichever last name we've got at montgomerycountymd.gov. We will get back to you. We will forward this to the people who can solve these problems directly and get this kind of thing going in the budget. And, you know, sometimes there's some other people who have a point of view. Community associations are always an important area of conversation. We'd like to hear from the community around, are there other things going on we need to address as well? But this is the way we, as a community, really get our hands around issues. So I really want to thank you for putting this together, and we'll get that information from you and get back to you as soon as we can with some good expert advice as to the right solutions there. This is terrific.
Thank you. Councilmember Irvin?
Thank you very much. This is occurring in the district that I represent, and I want to thank you also for your advocacy, because the issue you're bringing up is an issue that we're paying very close attention to, and that is walkability in our communities, safety at night, being able to traverse the county where more people are on bicycles, more people are trying to walk. So this is becoming a huge issue, especially in the down county area, where every day I see more and more people walking. And so we need to do all that we can to make it safe. So I don't know who in the audience is here from the county executive's office, maybe from Department of Transportation, but we're going to have to get your request over to someone that we can work with to get going on that. And I live right off of Sligo Creek Parkway, so I know exactly what you're talking about, the curvy roads, and especially at night, there's no lighting at all. And so thank you very much for your advocacy.
Okay, let's step up a little further here. Okay. Hi, my name's Darian Unger. Welcome, welcome to Silver Spring. I'm glad you're here. The reason I'm here to ask you this question is because almost seven years ago, I brought my infant son to the groundbreaking of what was supposed to be the Silver Spring Transit Center. And my son is now in 1st grade, and we have been walking around that construction site with tens of thousands of other commuters for literally his whole life. And so what I did was, just for comparison, I thought I'd look at some other things that took less time than this public project to finish. The Pentagon, for example, the entire Pentagon took two years to build, also taking much less time than the Transit Center, the Eiffel Tower, the Empire State Building, all of World War II, the Chesapeake Bay Bridge, and just to keep things local, all right, the Silver Spring Firehouse around the corner, the combined firehouse and police substation, the Discovery Channel right across the street, right? All took so much less time. So this is, this is beyond ridiculous. And now, you know, this is rich. The report that is investigating the mistakes and the cause of the lateness is itself late. So, I mean, it's funny at first, but in fact, this is, this is an embarrassment. And it's not just an embarrassment to the county, I mean, because these delays, actually, they hurt business, they hurt mass transit, the community, and, excuse me, local development. The massive detours around the construction site make it less safe for pedestrians and lead people to drive instead of taking, taking the bus and metro. It just, it drives people away. And almost equally importantly, it erodes people's confidence in government and the ability of public officials to build or oversee an important project like this. So, I mean, that erosion manifests itself in several ways. And we have people on blogs now using this as a reason to doubt the Purple Line, right? A very important project, and they point to this as an example of government incompetence and say, well, then how can they build that? Right? And you've got people looking at public records of, you know, Folger Pratt and its associated PACs through all of its different LLPs, giving tens of thousands of dollars to public officials around the county and state, right?
Where are they? Where are these public officials with the tens of dollars?
And this, I mean, this can lead even the, you know, the most enthusiastic supporter and people who believe that government has an important role in creating livable communities. You wonder, how can we get stronger oversight? And that's, that's what I'd like to ask here. I would, I would, I would love, I'm requesting stronger oversight, and I would love to see the County Council use its full voice and muscle to rescue this project and get it done.
Okay, reality check.
Thank you. Councilmember Reimer had raised his hand first, so I'm going to turn to him first.
Great comments, Darian, and well expressed. This has been a very unfortunate circumstance, there's no question about it. And I serve on the Transportation Committee, and we have reviewed this a number of times, and we're actually going to take it up again next week to, I hope, get a chance to walk through the results of the engineering study that was done. I'll give a little background on the situation. The county discovered, I guess it's been about a year, maybe a little longer, that the concrete was poured improperly in the structure. And so in some places, it's a little bit too thick, and in some places, it's a little bit too thin, and it's flaking, like the concrete's sort of flaking off. Now, there is no, there has never been a finding or really the assertion that the structure itself is going to fall down. The question has been, will there be maintenance issues over the long term that might cause expenses that aren't foreseen, and if so, who should pay for those? And then is the experience that users will have in this facility, you know, is it actually going to be like a bouncy ride? And if so, like, who should pay and how much? And then will WAMADA even accept the project? One of the wrinkles in this is that it's actually WAMADA that has to sign off on the finished product. And so it's a complex negotiation with them. The basic issue is, in my opinion, if there are long-term maintenance costs that were not factored into the contract, then they need to pay for those. And so that is a legal battle, because they don't want to pay for those. And one of the problems we're trying to avoid is the last resort, which is nothing but a legal battle, because in that case, the project would actually draw out for years. And the worst-case scenario is really four more years of legal battles, you know, with costs mounting and meanwhile, the site remaining the way that it is. So what the county did was we commissioned an engineering firm to review the structure and make recommendations to us about what the courses of action, what our options are, and then we use that in our negotiation with the developer or the construction company. And that process is nearly complete. So the study is nearly complete. Yes, it has been delayed by a few weeks, but it is nearly complete. So you will begin to see, I think, actual tangible outcomes of the negotiations in the coming weeks. Our Department of General Services continues to say they expect the site to open on time in August, well, on time from the last projection, in August, but that, they haven't changed that. I can't tell you that I know that that's going to happen, but they haven't said, well, you know, we know it's going to be in our two years now. But once we get to the engineering report, we have to see the engineering report to really figure out, well, where does the responsibility lie? You know, it could be that the county fulfilled its appropriate oversight role and the contractor made a mistake that no oversight could have prevented, or it could be that the county did not fulfill its proper oversight role and should have prevented that mistake from happening in the first place. We don't really know that answer yet. And I personally, I think the rest of us are trying to avoid jumping to conclusions, and we're trying to, you know, not push parties into that protracted legal battle. But I apologize, you know, it's terrible. We all agree that it's terrible, and we are working on it. I'm doing everything that I can think of, and I think we are as well, but I know it's not a satisfactory situation.
I think I'll just entertain one more answer, because I know that we have a long line of questions. So who else is on the TNE Committee that is present? Oh, you.
I'm with you, Darian. I think it's intolerable that it's taken this long, and I don't know why we've had to wait this long for the report. We've known about this for a year, and I think it's been devastating to the community. So you're absolutely right, as Hans has laid out the issues, and it's, it's not okay for Silver Spring to have to suffer through this for as long as it's, as it's had to. It should have been open years ago.
I wanted to wrap up this real quick and say that, you know, I think Hans laid out some of the problem here, but I wanted to interject that the county executive and his team, it's the first time that the county has actually been, been the, you know, they're the designer, they, everything that's happening here really is the fault, I believe, of the county. They had change order after change order after change order. It took way longer than it was supposed to. How this concrete got poured wrong is still a question. Could we be held up in court for a long time? We could. It depends on who you talk to, the answer you get. So if you talk to the general contractor, you get one answer. If you talk to the county, you get a different answer. If you talk to the subcontractor, you get a different answer. Someone is to blame. It will all be worked out, hopefully, for the benefit of the people who have to suffer through getting to work every day using the metro. And as you said, more and more people are just throwing their hands up and saying, the heck with it, I'll just take my car. So I think at the end of the day, we're supposed to get this report. We've been waiting for a year. That's unconscionable, that we, the County Council, the legislators that you elected, are waiting for the county executive and his team to tell us what went wrong. So now it's all up to the lawyers. It's WAMADA's lawyers, it's the contractor's lawyers, it's the subcontractor's lawyers, and it's the county's lawyers. We all know that's not a good scenario. So hopefully, we get to the bottom of it soon.
I'm sorry. What do you think we should do? Because I think everybody has an answer, and I know we have a long line, so, Ms. Moderator.
Well, I think we probably need to move on to the next question.
I think we do, and then we'll...
So just to courtesy of the folks who came out tonight. So that's who we're here for. So thanks a lot. We really, really appreciate it. And folks, while we're getting the next person down for a question, I realize a lot of you have prepared statements and have done a lot of research, but the best thing to do to get your question asked is to put it right out there first and foremost. So step right up.
Hello, my name is Amyska Herrera, and I have the pleasure and the privilege of working for the county, and I'm very proud of that. But tonight, I'm here solely as a resident of Silver Spring. I live over on Second Avenue in Woodside, just off of Spring Street. I know the county is looking at trying to become more hip and cool, and I have to say that I've lived in the Silver Spring area for 14 years, so I have seen the progression that has happened here, and I'm very proud of that, and I love living in this community. And so what I just wanted to do was really, I don't know that you'll have any answers to these issues, but I know that there are many things in bureaucracy that are hard, but that when any one of you are interested in them, that answers tend to be found, and if necessary, laws are changed. So I just wanted to raise these issues, and you're here in my neighborhood in Silver Spring, and welcome. So what I want to say is, first is, one of the things that Silver Spring lacks is a dance club, a place where people have a DJ and that they can go out. It's not a pay $50 type of venue, but it's a sort of weekend type of thing. And I have talked to several of the bar owners, and uniformly, they say, you'll never get through the county bureaucracy in order to get that open. I don't know if that's because of the 50/50 rule in terms of food versus liquor. I don't know for sure if that's something that you control or it's at the state level, but I did want to raise that, that that certainly is something as a hip kind of thing that people would be interested in doing, and that as you move forward with that, if you can be asking questions for that. Second is, if you can do anything that's in the outside street area so that the downtown Silver Spring, people really think of it as stretching to at least Jackie's or down to the Silver Spring College, whether that's because you put up things on the streets that are markers, so that people feel like, I could park at Ellsworth where the county's made all this free parking available to me, but then we can walk around? Because there's many people that I meet, they don't live within walking distance, they're not lucky enough to live within walking distance of downtown, but they do live within a five-minute, six-minute drive, so doing those kinds of things. The third thing would be liquor overall. A lot of the restaurant owners talk about the fact that they have difficulty getting orders filled through the county. I think that there's a role for the county to continue to be the distributor, but to have it be more responsive. I don't know if there's a business survey that can be done, there are applications. I know the other day that I used the inventory app, and it was very useful, but a lot of people will say that there are good restaurants in Montgomery County, but not great restaurants. And I do think that the liquor policy is something to be looked at. The fact that it's very hard to go to a show at the Fillmore and be able to come out to a restaurant that's still open, because we close earlier than DC does, so that's... And the last thing I would say is to advocate for a smarter traffic management policy. We have a system in which we need to have cars and people able to work together. I like to walk around, and often I will walk to downtown Silver Spring, but when I take elderly residents and elderly relatives to the movies, they have walkers. I need to drop them off right at front. I may walk to a restaurant, but I still drive to the grocery store. We now have a... We now have a policy of where, at the major intersections in Silver Spring, you can't make a left-hand turn, which pushes traffic into other places. You used to be able to leave the Whole Foods parking lot, and you could drive out to Spring Street, and then you could go around to buy wine off of Roter. But now, we've erected a no-left-hand-turn sign. We've made the traffic narrower on Spring Street, so now, I see backed up at traffic, backed up on there. And then, frequently, along Colesville Road, we have parking for just this limited period of time that causes all this congestion. So, that's what I would say.
That's great. And I think that if you could also, I mean, and you see us every day, so you can send us specifics, I think will be great also, because I know I want to be respectful of everybody who's in line. I think Councilwoman Elrich wanted to respond briefly about the hipness issue, I believe, and then I think we'll address the other ones, if you send this to us in writing. I think there's a really good point.
So, people like me have been abandoning Montgomery County for entertainment since I was a teenager. I mean, this was not ever the place that you went to have fun. It was always DC and Virginia and other places than here. I think you're right about a dance club, but I think people's pessimism needs to be tempered a little bit. I mean, society has dancing now, and society's moving forward. Last I talked to him, with his rooftop bar. And I get a sense that there's a willingness, there's only been a willingness to engage for him. And I was actually recently approached by somebody who's interested in opening up another club nearby. I won't say where, but in the downtown area. And I do think there needs to be a variety of different activities. I mean, somebody asked us, or some reporter was asking whether Hans and I were plotting to lure all the college students out of downtown DC, and that's not really the case. The case is try to have young professionals who live here to have the kind of, you know, social opportunities that they have in some of the more urban settings, and those are the kind of things we're looking at. I think the liquor prohibition is really a problem, because people worry about, "If I stay up in the extra hour, an hour and a half, am I going to run afoul of my food-to-liquor ratio?" And I think the other problem is just daytime business down here. If it's not here in daytime, it's hard for bars or restaurants to only function a nighttime business. And I'll talk about society, they just pulled their lunch menu. And I was, I've been down here a few times trying to have meetings with people in the limited number of places that are open for lunch in downtown Silver Spring, is really surprising. I mean, it's just not much happening. So, I do think we need to figure out how to deal with some of this stuff, and make it so that there is an atmosphere here that people who are young and look for other places actually think that we're a viable, you know, contender and a decent place to live.
Older people like to go to those places, too, Mark.
That's why I'm sympathetic.
I would say that we're all young here, and that we all enjoy that.
I have not grown up.
Thanks.
I know, for those of you who know me, you're looking at me and thinking, "Oh, no, not again." I'm Victoria Price. I live at the Charter House, as those of you who know me know, for the past seven years I've lived there. And I'm corresponding secretary for the Charter House Residence Council. May I hold this? I can't, can I hold your hand?
Sure, you can hold my hand. I'm sorry.
It's just, okay, for balance. Several years ago, when Councilmember Valerie Irvin was county council president, and she made a presentation at the Charter House, it was a consumer protection program. That was absolutely outstanding. And one of the questions that one of our residents asked was, "Is an ombudsman only for nursing homes and assisted living?" And the answer, of course, was yes. Well, that triggered something in my brain, and for those of you who know me know, once I got something in my brain, I'm intractable. I've been advocating for some time for an ombudsman for county rental housing for seniors. Okay? And as Councilmember Elrich heard me say in December at a Renters Alliance meeting, "Just because something isn't illegal doesn't make it right." And I'll give you some examples, and Councilmember Leventhal, Councilmember Elrich, Councilmember Andrews, you've seen the documents that we've been shoving at you for seven years. But, just to give you a scenario of the last few years, we received, about three years ago, we received a memo from management telling us that we were going to get new furniture for the lobby. Well, the lobby was stripped bare, and it looked like a warehouse. Even the paintings were taken off the wall. The result was that the residents were sitting on the floor. This is a senior building. So, we sent letters to every arm of the county and said, "Something has to be done about this." Well, something was done. The result was that nine dining room chairs were taken out of the dining room, put in the lobby, along with a park bench from the roof. And eventually, that was changed somewhat, when coenforcement said, "We're coming for an inspection." But this is now March of 2013. The same dining chairs are in the lobby. We have three new tables, but the same dining chairs are in the lobby. We had a couple of residents for whom our Residence Council advocated, using our own Renters Council attorney, and they were being subjected to what we call unjust cause evictions. Well, thank heavens, they're still here. They're still with us. But, because the evictions didn't happen, management created an arbitrary rule that stated residents could not reserve a common area space for parties or functions if they are in litigation with management.
So, you're asking about getting an ombudsman?
Yes, I'm getting to another point very quickly. Okay, now, our seniors in our garden club were made responsible for maintaining a common area. That's the solarium on the fifteenth floor. So, last summer, we were trying to maintain a solarium without air conditioning and 119-degree heat. So, what I'm saying is, I'm advocating for an ombudsman who has more legal teeth than landlord/tenant, because they have certain legislative limitations that really need to be eradicated by somebody. I'm 63 years old. We have people in their 80s. Okay? But, this, to me, is unacceptable. It is not illegal, but it is not right. It is an issue of stripping us of our dignity. We pay rent for these spaces. We pay rent to be comfortable. We pay rent to live with respect, to live with dignity. And as I have said to the owners and management before, this is our last stop before either a nursing home or the undertaker comes for us. And my question to you is, how can you create an ombudsman who can say, "Enough is enough." Enough is enough. And forget landlord/tenant, but enough is enough, and we're going to deal with you.
Councilwoman Irvin, and then Councilwoman Elrich.
Nice to see you, Ms. Price.
Nice to see you.
We've known each other for the whole seven years that you've lived at Charter House, and so has everybody on this panel that's been around at least that long. And we know that Charter House has had its share of pretty substantial issues, and we've worked as closely with you as we could. And I know that this question about the ombudsman has come up before, and you are, your building is owned and managed by who again?
It's owned by Homes for America and managed by Centrum.
Homes for America. We do recall now, Homes for America. And so, this has been an ongoing battle with Homes for America in terms of how they are not treating the residents of Charter House well at all. And so, I think an ombudsman is not just good for Charter House, it's good for all buildings, whether they're senior or not. And so, I know that Councilmember Elrich is biting, biting his lip to sort of make a comment on this, and so, we will share the microphone on this. But, I have not actually worked on this issue specifically, on an ombudsman, but I think that there are many of us here sitting at this, on this stage, who would really like to take a look at that and see what we can come up with.
So...
I think you have an answer coming here from Mr. Elrich. One more answer here.
No need. I mean, it's always a pleasure working with you. We're not going to create an ombudsman with the ability to trump processes. I mean, in my view, we've got things that should work, we just don't make them work. And that's a different issue. Whether things get enforced, and when they don't get enforced, it's not a problem of a lack of laws, it's a problem of an unwillingness to enforce the laws that we have and to provide the protection we had. Now, I created, you know, funding for a tenants' organization, and you've been to some of these meetings, and you know, and I'm actually really happy. When I was in Tacoma Park, we used to see tenants all the time, but in Montgomery County, you never saw tenants. And for the first time, we're beginning to see rooms full of tenants coming out and talking about problems similar to yours. You stand up, and you know that there'll be other people up telling stories like yours. And I think we need to provide some kind of support. You all can't afford the attorneys that the apartment houses can afford. You can't take time out of your lives endlessly to fight fights that other people fight with people they pay for. And so, I really do think that it's a legitimate thing for us to support you. I'm going to be moving forward pieces of the recommendations that came out of the task force. And one of the things that, you know, we, I've tried to support at the state level is movement on just cause eviction. And I went down and testified, and I was kind of horrified by the comments from some of the legislators, who said, "I mean, you're trying to create permanent tenancy for people?" And I'm thinking, "Well, if you're a homeowner, you pretty much look at it as you've got permanent tenancy. As long as you pay your bills, your tenancy is permanent." And why? Because your rent, somehow, you should not know where the roof is going to be over your head a year from now. And why it's okay to think that renters don't deserve some kind of permanency, I think is a real shame, and I think people miss the value of permanency in a community, which is, when you know you're going to be there, you're going to write your council member. If you're moving every year, you don't know who your council member is going to be, and it's like you don't get vested in the community. But if you're at the Charter House for seven years, and your folks are there, then it's going to be, "I want to know what's going on in my neighborhood, I want to know what you're going to do for me, you're going to hold the elected officials accountable." And I think that's a good thing. And at the younger level, people care more about their schools, because another kid's going to be in the school that whole time. So, I think tenant permanency, like all permanency, creates stable and more viable neighborhoods, and I'll do what I can to support that and promote that.
I also wanted to just request from my colleagues that if we can keep our answers short and to the point, because we do have a line of folks who've been waiting very patiently, and time is running out.
Okay. You can step up a little further here. There we go.
Good afternoon, my name is Lynette Allen, and I am the vice president for the Connecticut Avenue Estate Civic Association. Currently, we have a very major problem that's in regards to illegal dumping. There is a county right-of-way on Valleywood Drive that extends from Andrews to Wiseman. And we're still having problems with mattresses and furniture being dumped out there. You know, they're not calling for bulk trash to come and get it, you know, and so, either the civic association has to call, you know, to have somebody to come out and get it, because all they're doing is placing the orange tags on it if they see it, or just leaving it. And the mattresses, I mean, can you imagine coming out your house? I came out my house one day, there was a mattress in front of my house, you know, so it's unsightly. And on the right-of-way field, even though they have an illegal dumping sign there, they don't care. They're still just throwing the stuff out on the right-of-way field. And the second thing is in regards to the Dellwood Playground, and this is a question. Which county department has full jurisdiction over the Dellwood Playground? The Department of Rec handles the maintenance of the playground equipment, and the DOT cuts the grass, but which department has full jurisdiction over this area? Thank you.
Well, first, I will say that we did answer a lot of those questions. I know that you're a civic association, and I had the opportunity to go pick up some of the trash with you. And so, it's been an ongoing issue. I know that we did respond in writing, and unfortunately, in my opinion, it's an issue that continues to be a challenge, not just in your neighborhood, but in a lot of areas in District Four. And right now, in my office, and Adam Fogel is here, my chief of staff, we have been actively pursuing answers in terms of, you know, why, and trying to get to the bottom of the question as to, why is it that we seem to have a preponderance of, you know, loitering and just illegal dumping throughout District Four? And we have some issues, of course, with jurisdictions, and some are state roads, some have to do with counties, some has to do with just, you know, raising awareness in neighborhoods and communities. But it is something that bothers me, and my staff will tell you that, you know, sometimes I'm driving to work, and I'll, at the stoplight, text them and say, "Why is there, you know, dumping a mattress in the middle of a median?" So, it is a problem. We're working very actively, and we will definitely, obviously, continue to engage with you to ensure that we can protect this, because it is unacceptable to me that it seems to just be recurring. And, you know, that's our responsibility. It shouldn't be up to the neighbors to have to, you know, adopt roads only, et cetera. We need to figure out if it is a matter of budgeting. I know there have been some cuts. We're trying to also get to the bottom of that particular issue.
And the playground, do we know who maintains jurisdiction?
In the playground, we've been looking at that issue as well. And it is, you know, you described it very well. I think that that's been one of the biggest question marks in terms of, you know, is it the recreation department, is it the parks department? But we'll follow up with you in terms of what we have found out.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, sir. Hi.
Thanks for being here tonight. I'll try to be quick. A school question for you. My daughter is at Silver Spring International Middle School down the street here. Couple of years ago, I think it would be fair to describe it as a struggling school. A new principal came in, made a lot of really great changes, one of which was instituting an eight-period schedule. We learned recently that they are intending to walk away from that schedule and go back to the seven-period schedule that was failing beforehand. The process has not been, from the parent's perspective, transparent. We believe that that schedule has been a big part of the improvements that have been made there. I don't have a lot of data at my disposal, but I think that the school ranked second, for example, in African-American students finishing algebra among the county middle schools. Prior to those changes, we would not have sent our kids there. I've got two more coming behind her, so this is a practical matter for me. We were very happy with the enthusiasm of the administration there when we first visited the school a year ago. The teachers very sincerely expressed their excitement about what they're able to achieve with that school format, and I'd like to know what can we do to be a more effective part of this process? And I'd also like to know, I have not heard a clear answer to the question, what the union's position is on the topic, and what role they play. I don't think it's a controversial question, so I'm sort of scratching my head as to why there hasn't been a clear answer to it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Irvin, Chair of the Education Committee?
Not only do I chair the Education Committee, but I live like right across the street from that school, and my youngest son went to Silver Spring International Middle School the first year it opened, and that school has seen its, has seen its share of ups and downs, and it was, it's on its way up. It has been seeing a couple of years of really good test scores, and people seem to be very excited about what they're doing there. We recently heard about this for the first time. Yeah. And I did contact the area superintendent for that school, who has not returned my phone call. We do, you do. We understand that there is an issue with the union regarding this eighth-period change. And so, we're going to be working with the community there at Silver Spring International Middle School to get some of our questions answered, to the point where, as the chair of the committee, I may be bringing the topic to the committee. I'm sitting next to Phil Andrews, who serves on the committee, and Councilmember Craig Rice is also on the Ed Committee. So, this is becoming a big and heated issue. And so, until we get more information, there's not much more I can say, but I really appreciate you coming here on behalf of your own family, but all the families at Silver Spring International Middle School, who deserve a great school. And so, we'll work with you to get to the bottom of it.
We had another resident join us, too, who had the same question along the same lines as this gentleman as well.
Councilwoman Rice also wanted to answer.
Yes, so, I'm actually fine. It's, I have the same concerns. Our concern is really, we don't want to fall backwards. We want to stay where we are at the least. We would like to move forward, and we really are very concerned that these changes would be negative for students and also for the community. Yeah, because if you go back into the same situation that we have been a few years ago, where nobody really wanted to send their kids to these schools, yeah, we would like to avoid that.
And I know the story well. What's also interesting is that Silver Spring International Middle School is right next to Sligo Creek Elementary School, and they have some other issues going on. This community is really going through some extraordinary changes around these two schools, and so, we're aware of it, and I know my colleague wants to make a comment as well.
Well, I just wanted to address one thing, because when you asked about what you can do, you also have elected members of your school board, and is their responsibility, just as it is our responsibility from the fiduciary arm of the school system to make sure they're supported, but it is theirs specifically... sure they are supported, but it is theirs specifically when it comes to curriculum and these kinds of decisions? And if those decisions are not in line with where the community is, you need to hold those elected officials accountable. That's extremely important, and I cannot be more passionate about that in terms of that I think for far too long, there have been passes given to elected officials that are making decisions, that are shaping the very things that are affecting you, but you're not holding folks accountable. And so if they're not returning your calls, I mean, I'm going to tell you right now, if you have a council member and we're not returning your calls, that would be unacceptable. And so for you to, you know, have a call into an area superintendent and for them to not call you back, that is unacceptable. That is not how government should work. People should be held accountable for those kinds of things happening.
That's right. And absolutely. Elected officials work for the public, they're paid for by the public, they need to be able to answer the public. In terms of the relationship between the counties and the schools, it is important to keep in mind that the MCPS and the other school systems in the other counties are state agencies. Although in Montgomery County, most of the funding for MCPS comes from the county, that's not true everywhere in the state, they are state agencies, and they're subject to state laws, so no county law applies to the school system. Our influence is really through the budget, but only to a certain extent, because we're now handcuffed by the State General Assembly in terms of how much has to be given to the schools on an annual basis. And the only discretion the county council now has, which it needs to exercise, is not to go above that maintenance of effort level until the outrageous law is changed that was passed last year by the General Assembly that treats all spending for the schools the same, whether it's conferences, travel, or reducing class size.
Thank you so much. Hi.
Hi, my name's Scott Schneider, and I've been a resident of Silver Spring for almost 30 years, and seen a lot of changes, obviously. And I had two questions, and I was hoping somebody would ask my first question before I got up here, but my kids are in their late twenties, middle twenties, and they would love to move back to Silver Spring. Hopefully, they'll find jobs, but they are really concerned that they can't afford to live in Silver Spring. I mean, I see thousands of new apartment buildings and apartments being built in Silver Spring, and that's great, and they're all luxury condos. So where are we going to find? I mean, I know the council has been very active on the affordable housing, trying to push for affordable housing, but is there going to be any affordable housing in Silver Spring when it gets done? And then I had one other question, which I wanted to ask, which is about, I live in the Long Branch area, and I know Long Branch, there's a new sector plan, et cetera. And I know the council's put a lot of money, a lot of effort into building an arts district in this area. We have an empty theater, the Flower Theater, that's been empty for years, which could be used as an arts amenity to attract businesses and people to that area. And I'm wondering if that's something that the council can seriously take advantage of.
Okay. Councilwoman Irvin and Councilmember Reamer, and Councilwoman Leventhal.
Hi, Scott. Thanks for your question. I'll take the second question, since I know a lot of people want to answer the first one, and that is about the old theater. So yesterday, I just happened to have a follow-up meeting with the owner of that strip, that little strip center, and that is slated to be redeveloped. And so it's part of that master plan, and they are looking to keep that theater facade because it has historicity, and there will be a lot going on, hopefully very soon, in that area, and the master plan is moving that forward. So, good news is coming.
There you go. Councilwoman Reamer, Leventhal, and then Elrich, quickly, because we have...
And quickly, because we're running out of time very quickly here.
Great question, something that I think a lot of us are grappling with. You know, on the positive side, a lot of the residents of the downtown Silver Spring area are younger, so there are housing opportunities, but the market rate is not affordable for a lot of young people because of the economic conditions that they're in. You know, they're coming out of school with huge loans to repay and their entry-level jobs. And the set-asides that we have, 12 and a half percent of the unions as affordable, that's really for more of a low-income housing environment, and the market rate is just not affordable. There really aren't great answers, but hopefully more housing, well-balanced in its planning, can provide more supply. But I wish that there were a way for the government to just, you know, say that these new buildings that will go up should have less than market rate prices, but, you know, we can't do that, so still working on that.
All right. Councilwoman Leventhal, real quick.
Touching on that very quickly. The market in Long Branch is going to be changed for the better when the Purple Line comes. I'm feeling more optimistic today than I have in a long time, because the governor and the leadership in the state legislature are now promoting a transportation bill. But all of you who care about the Purple Line have got to contact your state legislators in the remaining weeks, because if this funding package does not get through the legislature, the prospects for the Purple Line are very dim. If the Purple Line doesn't come to Long Branch, nothing's going to change in Long Branch. Flower Theater's private property. I don't know that the county should acquire it. We can't acquire every property that we want to revitalize, even if we acquire things sometimes, like the Transit Center, we don't necessarily know the best way to revitalize it. So it is market-driven, as Hans said, that's correct, but to change the climate in Long Branch, and as the sector plan calls for, it requires the Purple Line.
Do we have a little bit more time?
We have one minute.
One minute. Councilwoman Elrich?
Quickly on the theater piece, one of the things I think we could do is look at it as the restoration or maintenance of the theater as an amenity for the future development, which doesn't mean we have to acquire it. It could be something that was similar to done with the amenity at the Fillmore. On the rental thing, I'm a believer in rent stabilization. I frankly, you know, we've watched the affordable housing stock in this county vanish, and it's going to continue to vanish. And we cannot, under any program known to man, produce units faster than they're being lost to the county. And one of the big concerns in the Long Branch Sector Plan, in fact, raised by residents in Long Branch, is that one of the scenarios is a loss of the affordable housing in Long Branch, because it's reached the end of its life, and be replaced with new housing, which of course will be like everything else in the county, not affordable. Get engaged in the master plans.
Okay. Lots of great questions tonight. I want to thank everybody for coming out for our town hall meeting. This is all we have time for. I'm going to turn it over to Council President Nancy Navarro for some closing remarks.
Thank you so much for taking the time to be here. I know that there were many questions, and hopefully we can continue the dialogue. Do remember that Friday, we get the executive request for the budget, and we hope to see you and give us your feedback on what do you think are the priorities for you. And again, thank you so much. It's great to be here in Silver Spring. Good night.
[applause][1768.62]